Thank you all. Good evening and welcome to Monday, October 16th, 2003, the City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Tim Allison, Chaplain and Bereavement Coordinator at the Visiting Nurses Association. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, you are indeed the God of all wisdom. But in these chaotic and questioning times, you are a God of all knowledge and peace and order. Where there is disorder and chaos and violence around the world, we pause to say, speak Focus our attention on this meeting. May you bring clarity of mind and heart and may we discuss the issues you call us to discuss with a sense of kindness and love toward each other. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Steinmeyer?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
And next on the agenda, we have citizens' request and Tony Summer is going to speak, so...
My name is Tony Summer, 220 West Mill Street. I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission and we're going to be putting on a historic bike tour of Independence, October 21st, which is this Saturday. It's looking like the weather is going to be absolutely perfect for a bike ride around town. So everybody needs to come out, enjoy the weather with us, and learn about the history of the city. This bike tour is going to start on the square at the parking lot next to the Pharaoh Theater and go around to six historic sites in the city. Each site will have its own tour guide who will give a brief talk about their particular site. There's going to be two different groups, one that leaves at 10:00 a.m. and another that leaves at 11:00 a.m. Both groups will have a leader to make sure everybody gets to where they need to go. This event is aimed at all ages and abilities, and if you have an e-bike, you're welcome to use that as well. We're hoping to have a good enough turnout to turn this into an annual event and then do different stops at different route each year. So make sure to come out if you're interested. I've had a lot of people tell me that they'd like to do a haunted tour next year, so hopefully we can justify doing that next year. Again, it's this Saturday, October 21st. We're leaving from the parking lot next to the Pharaoh Theater. One tour will leave at 10:00 a.m. and the other at 11:00 a.m., so you can pick whichever one is more convenient for you. I have a whole bunch of flyers here if anybody who happens to be here wants one. I'm sitting right back there, come and pick one up, and hopefully I'll see you on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lee Phillips. Lee's?
Lee Phillips, 1423 South Maywood Avenue. I am a concerned citizen. Tonight I rise to speak on the topic of zoning overlays such as the Inglewood Arts District overlay. This specific overlay project was mentioned in the podcast spoke about last meeting. It was mentioned by a current council member that this was going to be approved no matter what the homeowners say. The city mailed notices to approximately 1% of the affected homeowners. Cunningly, these mailers were concentrated to a 185-foot radius around the Inglewood Arts District off of Winter Road. The overlay was to cover approximately 4,500 homeowners. This left 99% of the affected parcels forced into this overlay while simultaneously having their rights of notice and protest removed. At the last meeting, I said the only thing holding this current council together is the selling out of our city, neighborhood by neighborhood, and it's happening by this council allowing investor groups to fundraise and overlay our communities en masse. These types of proposals use utopian words like density and upzoning, or use phrases and ideas such as, "You can build a retirement tiny home or auxiliary dwelling unit on your lot and rent your house out for extra income." In reality, this sellout is all about cramming as many people as possible into a one-block radius. The ultimate goal of these overlays is to turn as many properties as possible into rental properties. The proceeds only benefit the municipality and the investor or developer, and there is no reinvestment of money into our neighborhoods for improvement. If no one owns anything, then they cannot protest, and the communities eventually resemble the company towns of the 1930s. No parking, no sidewalks, no privacy, class warfare in the form of gentrification or displacement of lower-income people, which leads to more homelessness and creates more crime. Then there's the issue of health risks of living in dense areas. The narrative always sounds good as they tell you that these proposals will not affect your current residential zoning. Excuse me. Unfortunately, most people don't realize that the language in these overlay proposals usually states that any conflicting issue is overruled by the topmost layer. Whatever's on top wins. In effect, overlays are written to silence the voices of homeowners. It is meant to remove their property and protest rights by putting so many rental properties on the same block as your home that you can't get enough affected homeowner signatures to make a difference. It is meant to clamp down on homeowners' property rights, freedom of choice where someone wants to live, and their rights to protest. If no one owns anything, no one can protest. If approved, a builder would have the right to demolish an existing home or duplex and build a multifamily structure with no consideration whether the unit would have a negative impact on the existing neighborhood. For example, if you lived on a 40-foot by 80-foot urban lot and an overlay of this nature is approved, that builder could tear down your home and replace it with six tiny home structures. All of the other neighbors would not be able to say a word. I say to the City Council once again, you work for us and these types of overlays are a violation of our rights. If you are going to propose an overlay, then we demand a skin in the game. We will continue to tell the truth and share the facts with everyone who cares to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nina Woodson. Sorry. Nina, come on forward. Okay. And Nina, you're going to share with Casey, is that correct?
Yes.
Casey Blackwell.
We'll keep it within a short time.
All right. No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Rowland and council members. My name is Nina Woodson Falls. I am a neighbor of the Susquehanna neighborhood and an honorary neighbor of the Hill Park Independence just celebrated their annual cultural heritage skateboard competition, if you all are familiar with that, this past Saturday under an eclipse in Hill Park. And we are just here to say thank you for the mayor to attend our celebration that day. It was wonderful. All the skaters just appreciated him showing. And we have skaters here today as they say thank you, Mr. Steve Ogle, Kendall Bar, Raleigh Turman, Zane Matthew, and Elmer Falls. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Casey. He is here to request something from the council and the mayor. Casey Blackwell.
Hello and good evening. I'd like to thank you for all for taking the time to listen to our matter. Hill Park is a very important place to a lot of people, like from all ages, from ranging from young 50s all the way down to little kids just learning how to ride a skateboard. And it's a very important, I think, matter for our tax dollars to go towards. And we're requesting today to have a speaking session with the mayor and the city council. And we would really appreciate that because, like I said, it's very important to many people and it saved many kids from having a much darker future by them having a skate park and a place to spend creative time and exercise. Everybody can benefit from that. Everybody here, I'm sure, has a nephew or a niece or a son or a daughter who loves sports. And that's what skateboarding is. It's just another sport, just with a different outlet. It's not as competitive necessarily. I mean, we do have competitions, but every skateboarder roots on every other skateboarder. It's a very close, like knit group of people. And it could just, I feel like it could help a lot of kids who would go to, you know, worse things. And also skateboarders at a skate park, they kind of a little bit police themselves. I know there's been problems at the Hill Park, but also skateboarders don't put up with wrong things going on at their, where they're skateboarding. And I think that itself shows that maybe that be creative are a good way to spend tax dollars. And also, I mean, many other cities from Grandview to Lee Summit to even Raymore and Peculiar all have skate parks that have been freshly built. And we're just asking, you know, maybe even just add on to the one we have at Hill Park and, you know, give us an extra things, you know, and especially some trash cans like that, because we pick up the trash on a regular basis, like not saying the city doesn't do it as well, but we try to take care of it too. I mean, there's obviously bad seeds too that spread that trash, but at the same time, there's the good ones that pick it up. And I just appreciate your time and I don't think I have much more else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Appreciate it. And that's all of our speakers. Next, we have the proclamations. If you could read the proclamation, please.
Whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised of professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries in geographic areas, including more than 30 Rotary Clubs in the Kansas City region. Whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. Whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional 50 million per year, which would be further leveraged for maximum impact by an additional 100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Now therefore, Mayor Rowland hereby proclaim October 24th, 2023, World Polio Day in Independence and encourage all citizens to join Rotary International in the fight for the polio-free world.
Very good. And I know we've got our local president of the Rotary Club here. And do you have any other fellow colleagues who are going to come up with you to receive this proclamation?
Just a couple.
Okay. And could you give me, well, so you're going to have quite a few, is what you're saying? Probably too many to mention?
They're all wonderful people.
Well, I just want to be respectful and if there were, if we could mention them, we can, but if there's just too many, I understand. I'll let you make that call, Mr. City Manager.
I think we would enjoy a group photo if that'd be all right.
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Have all of your colleagues come up.
Mr. Mayor, can we make sure they all have their pins on, please?
Act like you like each other.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Mr. City Manager, well done, and thank you for bringing all of your colleagues here. So that was great to see. So thank you all for being here. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
We've got a motion and a second. Are there any council members wishing to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Resolution 23785 and 23786.
23785 and 23786. Thank you, Councilmember McCandless. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote for the consent resolutions, and then we'll bring the other two items out individually, so...
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
He's not here.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda passes 6 to 0. Councilmember McCandless, if you would make a motion, you'll have a second, then we can talk about 23785.
I make a motion to approve 23785 and 23786.
Okay. Second? Thank you. We've got a motion and a second to approve both of them and any discussion on any of the two items. Councilmember McCandless, I'll give the floor to you.
So the strategic plan for the city looked at the 35 boards and commissions and recognized that some of those had overlapping duties and it, I think, from a efficiency standpoint from the city staff, really taking up a lot of time and energy. So the recommendation was to have the city manager take a look at those and see about consolidation. This is such an important item, I would like to request that we send this to the November 13th study session so we can hear more about this and be able to give some input to the city manager.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? There's a motion to move this to the November 13th study session. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion to move this to November 13th study session?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just, I agree. I think that's, that's a wise idea.
Thank you. Anyone else who wanted to discuss this item?
I had the same thought.
You agree with Councilmember Hobart?
Well, and Councilmember McCandless.
And Councilmember McCandless? I don't see any objections. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, we'll take the roll on 23785, since we're going to move that to the November 13th, and we'll still be discussing 23786, just for clarification for folks here. So could you call the roll to move this item to the November 13th study session? 23785 will move to November 13th.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 23785 is moved to the November 13th study session. 23785 will move to November 13th.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 23785 is moved to the November 13th study session. Councilmember McCandless, 23786, and the floor is yours.
So this is the companion piece, and it would need also to be moved to the 13th.
Okay. And had I thought about that, we could have done both of them at the same time, so please forgive me. But we've got a second, and we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23786 will also be moved to the November 13th study session. And that takes care of all of the items on the consent agenda. This brings us to ordinances and second reading. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
23-090, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the Maternal Child Health Service Grant Program for the period of October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024, accepting funds for the period in the amount of $57,397.68, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item, 23090? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 23090 passes 7 to 0. Could you please read the next ordinance, please? 23091.
23091, an ordinance amending Section 11.12.004, emergency powers of the mayor of the Independent City Code, requested by Councilmember Mike Steinmeyer. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on this? Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Culver, one of the concerns I had that I just want to make sure, because if there's something we can change in the language tonight on number 6 in, in the ordinance itself where it says to order the discontinuance of selling, distributing, or giving away gasoline or other liquid flammable or combustible products in any container other than a gasoline tank properly affixed to a motor vehicle. My concern is, are we going to criminalize someone who's running a generator and they're either using an approved gas can that they store at home, or if they're providing gas to a neighbor or a family member friend? Is that, is that going to be criminalized under this?
So it wouldn't be criminalized under this. What you're describing, again, if you, to take a step back, what we're talking about here are, you know, the emergency powers of the mayor. So what can the mayor restrict?
Right.
So current, one of the things the mayor can restrict currently is to order the discontinuance of selling, distributing, or giving away gasoline or other liquid flammable or combustible products in any container other than a gasoline properly affixed to a motor vehicle. So what this means is the mayor could have an emergency order that restricted the, you know, storing gasoline in other ways other than this, which it's not necessarily about criminalizing it as it is prohibiting it. I mean, I suppose, you know, is it possible that were the mayor to issue that order and were someone to violate that order, could the police potentially write a citation? I suppose it's possible. I, I mean, I don't think that's, that's the intent, but the intent, I believe, is to give the mayor those powers, you know, with certain restrictions.
And I understand that. I would hope that would be the case, but we don't always know if we'll have a mayor who is that flexible. And, and if they decide that gas is in short supply, you know, what if, what if you have a business owner or a restaurant that needs to run a generator in order to keep their product in, in coolers cold so that they're, they're preventing, you know, waste and those kind of things? I understand we could discontinue the sale of, from gas stations, but I just want to make sure that the language is not such that if we're storing gasoline that we can use for personal-use generators or for a business-use generator, that we're not going to punish or criminalize that.
So currently, the way it's written now, within the mayor's emergency powers, the mayor would be able to restrict the storage the way you're describing it.
Right.
So if that were to happen, that, that under an emergency order, the mayor did restrict such storage, and if someone violated that, and if the police were inclined to issue a citation because of that violation, yes, that could occur.
Okay. So, but these are things that we're giving the council more weight in these emergency power decisions, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, so the council could, in theory, override that type of, of action, correct?
So, yeah, the mayor's powers are limited in timeframe essentially until the council is able to act. And so if, if the council felt that an emergency order should be different, they could vote that way and they'd be able to do that.
Yeah. And to be clear, I'm not challenging any of it. I just want to make sure that, that the folks understand, because we had this, we had this happen to us a couple of years ago. So we lived under this, and that's why the change. And I asked you to align this with the state statute and what you've done, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I know you did. I just wanted you to be
Yeah, I understand.
willing to, to put that on record, that you did weigh it against the changes that the state had
Yes, sir.
under emergency factors. Okay. Thank you. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussions? Councilmember? Please proceed. You bet.
If I could ask the city councilor a question?
Please proceed.
So, Jeremy, I looked through the documentation that was provided with this, and I can't find any reference to Section 67.265, RSMO as amended. I can't find that in there. And I, so can you just summarize for me what that section does?
Sure. So 67.265 was listed in the House bill that was attached to the ordinance, but not, so the language, the new language was in there, but we admittedly probably could have done a better job connecting all those dots for you all, so I apologize for that. So 67.265 was a statutory change, you know, after COVID that limited the, what cities could do for public health orders. So it essentially, it's, there are still, you all still have some of those abilities, but some of, some of the abilities and some of the powers that cities had pre-COVID, the legislature took away. So what this, and that's what is addressed in 67.265. So the title is Public Health Orders for Threat to Public Health by Contagious Disease Requirements/Procedures. So it outlines the parameters and the restrictions on cities issuing public health orders. So the, the goal of the addition of section, what is labeled Section 8 in the ordinance, is just to confirm that as it relates to public health orders, that the city is going to be in compliance with 67.265.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just was trying to understand a little more, because I was trying to read. I read all that stuff.
Well, and again, I believe the House bill, I think, was, I don't know, 100-plus pages or something like that.
And I scanned, I should say I scanned that. I didn't read every last word.
Yeah. No, we definitely could have done a better job kind of honing in on that, so I apologize.
Okay. That's helpful. The other question I have is relative to item number 6, which is deleted in here, to order discontinuing of selling, distributing, dispensing, or giving away of any firearms or ammunition or other weapons of any character whatsoever or non-intoxicating or intoxicating liquor. Help me understand, if you could, a little bit, when, when a mayor might want, I mean, what, what kind of situation could you foresee arising that would, where a mayor might need to have those provisions? And before we take it out here, I'd like to understand how that might, what will you foresee possible?
Sure. So generally, this, this language as the city has it has been around a long time, both in Independence and in cities across the state. And the idea, you know, behind this current number, the current number 6 in particular really, you know, relates to sort of the possibility of sort of kind of riots or, or, you know, kind of mass unrest within the city. If you think of, you know, Ferguson or, or other sorts of situations where things have quickly gotten out of control. The idea is that the mayor has the ability to stop the sellings of guns and alcohol in order to, you know, prevent more fuel from being poured on the fire. That's the, that's the rationale behind, behind having this in here.
So if we were to pass this as it is, and we had an event like Ferguson, then the mayor would not be able to authorize that?
That is correct. It would take the full council.
But the council could pass that.
Council, council could, yes. Council could, mayor could not individually.
And what if, what if the situation was
Council could, yes. Council could, mayor could not individually.
And what if the situation was so bad that the council could not convene itself?
I mean, the mayor, the mayor wouldn't have
Then the mayor can't be, the mayor can't do it.
The mayor wouldn't have the ability to do it. Correct.
Okay. I'm going to think about that a minute.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Well, we can vote on Zoom, right?
Correct.
See? We'll still have the internet. Google's coming, remember? See? Got you covered.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah. My other concern with that is the constitutionality of restricting the selling of firearms and distributing, dispensing. I don't know if it would, it's like anything else. You know, it's part of our constitution. The Second Amendment means a lot to some and nothing to others, but the fact is, it's there. And I think that my concern with it is, is the constitutionality of restricting the ability to sell, distribute, give away firearms, ammunition. I know that we have a public safety shortage in our community, and if things did get bad, I'm sure we can call 911 all we want, and we may be on our own. And so I pray that that never happens, but I don't want to have the issue come up where we can no longer take it upon ourselves to help protect our community if that need ever arises. So that was my other concern with that, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else other further discussion? Another further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 23-091, please.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23-091 passes seven to zero. That brings us to 23-092. Madam City Clerk, please read this ordinance.
23-092, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the local public health agency infrastructure grant program for the period of August 1st, 2023 through November 30th, 2027, accepting funds for the period in the amount of $333,687, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 23-092? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 23-092.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23-092 passes seven to zero. Madam City Clerk, could you read 23-093, please?
23-093, an ordinance approving the issuance of tax increment in special district revenue bonds, hub drive development project, Series 2023, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 16 million by the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Independence, Missouri, and authorizing certain other actions and documents in connection therewith. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
I know we've talked about this ad nauseam, but I just want to reassure people again that the city does not take on any debt or other risk with approving these.
Yes, happy to reaffirm that. The city is only involved in this to the extent that state law requires that the council approve the granting of the incentive, but this does not bind the city in any way, shape, or form to any kind of debt service associated with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 23-093? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for 23-093.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23-093 passes seven to zero. This takes us to first, excuse me, pardon me, first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
23-094, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs in the amount of $400,000 for a body worn camera policy and implementation program for the Independence Police Department for the project period of October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2023. 26.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I know we don't usually talk at first readings here, but I know this is going to come up at study session next week, and I will not be here present. Hopefully, I can attend online. I don't know if I'll have a signal where I'm at or not.
Sure.
So I just would like to ask city manager if he would make sure part of that discussion is about ongoing, the ongoing expenses after the three-year period, and how those would be handled and anticipated, being covered. Because I know we have a resolution on the books that says that we won't use one-time money for ongoing expenses. And so I'm not sure how that fits into this, but I do, if I'm not able to participate online, I will listen to the tape, the recording of it, and look forward to hearing what is shared. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
23-095, an ordinance granting a utility and fiber easement to Tillman Infrastructure LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, across part of the commonly known address of 14520 East 39th Street. 23-096, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2, General Commercial, to District R30, PUD, high-density residential planned unit development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located northwest of Interstate 70 and Woodschapel Road in Independence, Missouri. 23-097, an ordinance amending the City of Independence City Code by amending Chapter 17 Municipal Services Regulations, making necessary updates, clarifying right-of-way policy, and updating floodplain policy. 23-098, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19340. 23-099, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2, General Commercial, to District C3, Service Commercial, for the property at 1507 West US Highway 24 in Independence, Missouri. 23-100, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to vehicle sale, gasoline and fuel sales, motor vehicle repair, and car washes. This addresses item 4.2E of the 2023 City of Independence Action Plan. 23-101, an ordinance approving a plan for the industrial development project, authorizing the City of Independence, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed 70,200,000, and authorizing and approving certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Thank you. And that brings us to councilmember comments. And so councilmember Fears?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Saturday, Councilwoman McCandless and myself attended the firefighters' gala for their Good and Welfare Committees, Professional Firefighters, Local 781. And they were raising funds for their Good and Welfare Committee, which works within our community to help support families and children. Over the years, they've raised over $100,000, which those funds stay directly within our community by their support. So it was a good time. It was fun. I had not been to one of those, so I'm looking forward to attending some in the future. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First, this week, we lost a wonderful teacher who spent his entire career at William Crispin. Mr. Gene Hoppy passed away. He was here not long ago with a group of elementary, do you remember what school they were from, Zach?
I believe it was Otte.
Otte, yeah. And I think it was his daughter who was the teacher.
Believe so.
And he came to assist. And he was just a wonderful educator in our city, someone who expected the most out of all of his students and just an outstanding man, challenged us to be all that we could be in our adult lives. And he will be missed. He was a constituent of mine and loved him and his wife. They were just very kind people. So he will be missed. I wanted to say that. Also tonight, I'd like to read a statement, if I could, please.
Please proceed.
Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed colleagues and fellow citizens, today I sit before you with a heart full of gratitude and a mind of peace as I announce my decision to step down from my role as a city councilmember effective November 1st, 2023. Public service is a high calling, one that I have been privileged to engage in. And on this Boss's Day, my sincere appreciation extends to each of you, the public, who have been both my guiding light and my employers. Your expectations, your constructive criticisms, and invaluable suggestions have educated and molded me as a public servant. As we reflect on the past, it is imperative to acknowledge the far-reaching impact of the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020. The trials we faced as a city were particularly personal to me, as my family and I suffered the loss of my father. The communal spirit and resilience carried us through those dark days, and it came from you. You epitomized the strength and unity that defines our community. Family's always been my bedrock, and the needs of my family are drawing me in in a new direction. After considerable thought and conversations with my family, I've come to realize that I must make this transition. With an awareness of the urgency that life's circumstances sometimes dictate, I've made the decision to move, which requires me to act sooner rather than later. I want to assure you that this change is an expansion of my journey of service with you, not a conclusion. Life is a way of opening new doors when old ones close. I remain committed to the belief that our best days lie ahead. This is not a goodbye, but rather a shift in how I will continue to serve this community that I deeply love. To my distinguished colleagues, both past and current, your contributions on my, to my understanding and growth in this role have been invaluable. As I set my sights on new endeavors, my commitment to safeguarding the welfare and safety of our community remains steadfast. I would encourage my colleagues to remain true to the calling of our office, ensuring the voices of our constituents continue to be heard. For the residents of the Third District, rest assured that your needs and concerns will not go unattended. The mayor, along with at-large representatives, will continue to serve your interests diligently. I encourage you to keep your voices strong and your needs clear. In conclusion, may God's favor protect and uplift this city and all its inhabitants. Your voices will always resonate with me, and whenever I have the honor to serve, your perspectives will be represented. Thank you for granting me the privilege of serving you and for being fundamental to my journey of service thus far. I believe the best is yet to come for all of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember McCandless?
So it's hard to follow that. I have to say, I just deeply appreciate you teaching me how to do a better job in this role and modeling what it means to be collegial and bringing different opinions and perspectives so that we do a better job for our citizens. So, Mike, thank you. A couple of other items. I hope that people will take the opportunity to read the information items at the end of this agenda. It is the report on the Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee, the report on the Streets Improvement Oversight Committee, and the report on the Stormwater Oversight Committee. So we often ask you for your indulgence in raising taxes to be able to do a better job for our city. And so we want to be sure that you take the time to read the accountable reports on those taxes so that you know that those are being used the way that they were intended to. And a special thank you to the committees who spend their time and dedication to the oversight of those taxes. I would love to take a moment to recognize that opioid settlement funds will be coming to municipalities and counties and to the states. Those are from companies that made a lot of money off of selling pain medications to many, many people, and cities had to bear the consequence of that. As those dollars come in, I would like to ask Mr. City Manager to have the advisory board of health give recommendations to this body on different ways that those funds could be used. It is the intent that those not get absorbed into the general fund, but instead be dedicated to preventing future use and treating people who currently have opioid use disorders. Thank you.
Be our pleasure to do so.
The other is that we have lost our coresponders for the police department. We have had a contract for that, and that's such an important aspect of the work. And I'm hoping that we can explore other options and partners to be able to continue with the grant that we were awarded.
I'd be happy to work with our police department and our partners in mental health services to make sure we can find a serviceable way to get those grant funds spent within the designated timelines.
Thank you very much. My last item is that Anklewood Arts will be having the portraits of Independence, 6:00 PM next Friday, the 20th. I hope people will come out. The pictures were taken by Dan White, who's a Pulitzer Prize-winning photographer. They are simply the most beautiful black and white photos I've ever seen. And I hope he'll come out and celebrate what's a really unique opportunity for the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hobart?
Well, boy, I appreciate what Councilmember McCandless had to say to my colleague to my right, Councilmember Steinmeier. I surely am not going to admit that he taught me anything. But... But I'll miss you. And three years ago, I absolutely would not have said that. And I'm glad I'm saying it today. So, thanks for everything. And I'm absolutely looking forward to seeing what's next for you. And I will miss all the wonderful things that your wife writes for you to say. Fellow members of the council, Mr. Mayor, there is a gentleman in the audience that forgot to sign up. He needs about a minute
Sure.
to present us with something and speak. It's John Eppert. Does anybody have any objection for him coming up for just a second? Please, sir. Come on up, John.
Thank you. I got an email that I was on the agenda, but things happen. So with me is Amy West, my wife Nancy, whom all of you probably know. I'm her husband, by the way. That's the way that works around here. I'm here to thank the council and the city departments for their help and support. The three of us The three of us are the ones that put together the annual Halloween event in Georgia Owens Park, known as the Enchanted Forest. It is unique in that it is intended for families and small children, fairy tales, fantasy, that kind of thing. There's nothing scary. And every year, upwards of four thousand people come through there on the two weekends that we have the show. We have for you some passes because we want you to come and see the show. If you haven't, bring your families.
Thank you.
But I, I do want to let you know that we could not do this without the help we get from the city. Parks, Recreation and Tourism, Director Heidi's people, Jeff Umbright at the park, Mike Hicks, who's Parks Maintenance, they spend hours helping us get the park ready, putting up things for us, helping us with the power that we need and the things that we do. Power and light comes out, and they help us with some of the bigger things that we have to do. We couldn't do without them. The police department provides people those nights of the show to, you know, keep those four thousand people safe. The, the fire department makes sure that we're being safe and the things that we do that I would get carried away with if they weren't there. So we just want to make sure that you understand how much we appreciate the support we get from the city for this event and how much it means to the people of Independence. It's also a fundraiser for the arts, you know, for the theater arts here. And that particular event provides over half of the funding they get every year. So that's simply what I wanted to do, what we wanted to do. You girls have anything to say? Okay. Thank you, and please come out. The instructions are on the tickets. We'll make sure that you have a wonderful time.
Thanks, all.
Thank you, Mr. Eppert.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much and counsel.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you all for your indulgence. And Mr. Eppert, please forgive us for the miscommunication, so. Very good. Thank you very much. To Councilmember Steinmeyer, thank you for your service to our city. You have been a genuine person with passion, and you serve with a great heart. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work with you and for all that you've done for our city. And I also look forward to seeing the things that you do in the future, so. Godspeed. Also, the folks at Hill Park Skate Competition, some of them came and spoke this evening. But I went Saturday, and you would think that the skaters are all young people. And I saw a couple of folks well under their fifties, and I would not do that, trust me. I would, and I'm not in my fifties, so not a worry there. I hope I didn't break a HIPAA rule by saying that. But it was a great competition. They do a great job, and the folks that put it on have worked on it for years, and it's just a great event. So if you get a chance to see it next year, I highly recommend it. You don't have to stay for the entire day, but it is great to see these young people to compete. We also had the trash pickup on Saturday. Mr. Heidi, is he here? There, there you go. Just wanted to say thank you for being here. I know Meg was there too on Saturday. You helped very, very much, and I cannot say thank you enough for all the work that you do on that and to make that, to spend the time with us. And so thank you for that, and, and for your staff too. At other, you know, it is a, working for the Parks Department as well as the Police Department, so many roles in the, the cities require additional time, well above the traditional, you know, eight to five. And so I just want to say thank you to all of the city staff for all the hours that you spend above and beyond the call of duty to get these things done. So thank you all very much for all that you do. So thank you all. With that being said, Mr. City Manager, if you could wrap it up for us, please.
Well, that's a lot of pressure. No, on, on behalf of our staff, Councilmember Steinmeyer, just want to thank you for, for your service to the community. Look forward to seeing how we can continue collaborating, because I know the city means a lot to you. And those of you that don't know, Councilmember Steinmeyer can repeat all nine seasons of Seinfeld verbatim. So you can't knock over a Coke machine in one push. You got to rock it back and forth and then push it over. We'll see you for one more study session next Monday night.
Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
No, that's enough.
With that, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.